September 21st, 2017, meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps. Councilman Womack.
Here.
Or present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Chip Pugh, Campus Minister at Collagelside Church of Christ and Chaplain for the Tennessee Tech Football Team, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States Flag. Our Father, thank you so much for this great gift of this city that we're a part of, Lord, and thank you for this council. Thank you for those great servants that continue to give their lives to lead and to serve and to move us forward as a community. Lord, we want to honor you by the decisions that are made. We want to do our best to give to those that are close to us and the future generations that come, Lord, and continue to guide this council, continue to guide the servants of this community to make those good decisions. And down to every single detail, Lord, we want to honor you. Thank you, in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, number to God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chip. Item three, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes or corrections?
Mayor, we have no changes to the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Under Old Business 5A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on September 7th, 2017. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
5B, consider on second and final reading, ordinance 0170-815, rezoning 9.26 acres located on the corner of Old Sparta Road and Highway 111, tax map number 83-117.01 from RS20 Single Family Residential to CI Commercial Industrial Mixed Use. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, Councilmembers, this is the location of the property that's being considered for rezoning. As you stated, the request is to go from RS20 to CI Commercial Industrial Mixed Use. The indicated purpose for the rezoning is for the location of a radio station and a possible tower to go along with the radio station. The rezoning was approved by the planning committees recommended by the planning department, and we've had no calls or comments since first reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7B, consider on first reading, ordinance 0170-917, amending the Cookeville Municipal Code Title 18, Chapter 2, on the sewer use ordinance. I apologize, I went to the wrong one.
You told me for a loop.
Yeah, well, that's okay. You can just stay up there, please. 7A, consider on first reading on ordinance 0170-916, amending the Cookeville Municipal Code Title 16, Streets and Sidewalks, by adding Chapter 8 entitled Wireless Communications Facilities and Structures Located Within the Public Righway. Mr. Mills.
Mayor, Councilmembers, the city has been approached by several wireless communication companies regarding the placing of wireless communication facilities and support structures in our public right of ways. It's the understanding of the city staff that the FCC has ruled that wireless communication providers have rights to utilize our public right of ways for infrastructure just as telephone and cable providers have. Historically, to support only voice and text, wireless providers installed tall towers to serve users with the continued proliferation of smartphones and other 4G networks that utilize more data. And for future 5G technologies, wireless providers are augmenting traditional tall towers with localized wireless transmission facilities, otherwise known as small cell networks. These deployments are typically mounted at lower elevations and have significantly less coverage areas, but increase data capacity and overall functionality of wireless networks. It's recommended that the city regulate these facilities to minimize the impacts these facilities may have within the public right of way. The planning department, with the assistance of the city manager, the city attorney, the codes and electric departments have prepared an ordinance adopting regulations which would be inserted as a new Chapter 8 entitled 16 of the municipal code. The major components of these new regulations, at first, that these regulations would apply to all public right of ways within the city of Cookeville with the exception of I-40 and Highway 111, those would be regulated by T-DOT. It requires a pre-application conference with small cell companies to review proposed locations. It discourages new poles in the right of way by encouraging attachments to existing utility poles. Poles may be replaced at the applicant's expense to accommodate small cell attachments. Where new poles must be placed, the ordinance requires permits and fees to ensure that the poles are installed safely with minimal impacts. The ordinance also limits the height of any replacement poles or new poles within the right of way so that they do not substantially exceed heights of existing utility poles in the area. And finally, the ordinance requires the use of stealth technology to minimize or to improve aesthetics when necessary. As again, these regulations have been reviewed by all the applicable departments, and the planning department recommends for adoption of ordinance number 0170916.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Now, 7B, consider on first reading, ordinance 0170-917, amending the Cookeville Municipal Code Title 18, Chapter 2, on the sewer use ordinance. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we're proposing to modify the sewer use ordinance. This was being reworked and added to to comply with some state of Tennessee streamlining rules. TDEC has adopted these pretreatment regulations that model the EPA's federal pretreatment requirements, and there are several streamlining changes that we need to get into our ordinance to comply with the state's regulations. Ninety-nine percent of these changes are to comply with TDEC's current rules. We have also modified a couple of other things we wanted to change. One of them was the fat, oil, and grease program. We put some language in there to better reflect what we currently do, sort of tightens that up, and it's not just our program, but it's sort of put in the ordinance. We've added the city manager can set some fees and charges. It's already being done, but it sort of, it quantifies that a little bit better. We've changed the adjustment of bills section for sewer from a 12-month to a 3-month. We've had some wording that sort of clarified some of the intent of an ordinance passed before on subdivision regulations about the intent of when the developer puts in the utilities, what that charge should be. And then we had some criminal penalties that we had some numbers in there that, based on the city attorney's advice, we had to change that to a $50 per day. And if you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but we'd recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Ronnie, on these fees that you were talking about that we don't have in use at this time, like plan reviews and construction inspection and the waste work, are you going to base that on other cities?
Yeah, we've got, we have some fees in there currently and in the table I handed you guys. The only fees that we currently charge are to the industrial users for this, to cover part of this program because they're the ones that cause us to have to do a lot of the pretreatment modifications and a lot of the monitoring on their industrial discharges. So we have fees for those, and we have a holding tank fee, but there is a list in the ordinance of other fees, but it didn't have a number with it. And so we put some language in here for the city manager working with us to be able to set some of those fees if and when we decide we need to implement those.
Any other comments? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7C, consider resolution R170912, authorizing the participation in the TML Risk Management Pool Safety Partners Matching Grant Program. Melinda Kiefer.
Thank you, Mayor and council. What we have for you tonight is our annual Tennessee Municipal League Risk Management Pool Grant. It is a matching grant that we are able to apply for each year through their Safety Partners Program. This year, in conjunction with realizing we needed to update some of our AED defibrillators, the grant notification came at a perfect time, so we'll be able to use these funds to potentially pay 50% of six of, six of the, I think there's another slide, six of the AEDs. So the total grant amount is $3,000, and that would leave our cost just under $3,000 as well, and I request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7D, consider resolution R170913, authorizing an additional appropriation to the Cookeville Putnam County Senior Citizen Center. Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, just let me say that I'm really proud to be on a council that's been very supportive of this center. We have, since 2014, $426,000 have gone toward the center in terms of funding and repairs to the building. We currently are working on a parking lot improvement of about $1,600. We've got a gathering project that we want to do, and I really appreciate this support of the council, and we try to be a friend, have been a friend to the Senior Citizen Center, and I'm proud to be on that team. I became aware of some, due to a $10,000 unanticipated shortfall in funding, that the center is going to, is experience of some things that concern me a lot about what could happen in terms of programs that might disappear, activities, I want to enumerate those, but that I thought could impact in a very adverse way, the 900 active members that we have. And that's who we need to be concerned about. It's just not bricks and mortar. It's those people who, some of their primary social interaction is there. The most nutritious meal of the day they receive many times is there. A lot of people live alone who come there, activities for veterans, and just all the things that happen, the camaraderie, the esprit de corps. And what I had initially done is proposed by this item that we allocate $10,000 from the Quality of Life Fund, which does have a good balance, that would go toward that. But then, you know, yesterday morning, early, I'm beginning to pray about this and think about maybe, maybe there's a better way to do this. And, you know, the thought occurred to me, and if I were church, I'd probably say the Holy Spirit spoke to me, and I won't say that here because it might freak some of y'all out. But I believe, and I thought, well, you know, I began to meditate on the thought, and I spent the last couple of days, the afternoon yesterday and today, just walking around and to some friends that I knew who are good committee, they really were good community members and cared about the senior citizens, and I talked to them about, you know, a breakfast grant that might disappear, that the free breakfast would go away, and some other things that could happen that would leave the board of directors there in a very difficult position as far as impacting the members. And I talked to them and asked them, would you like to help out with that? In fact, and three of them said, yes, we will. We'd like to be involved with that. We'd like to give toward that. They actually asked me not to say who they were. They didn't do it for any glory or any personal, you know, gratification, but I asked them if they could and if I could do that. And in fact, one of them sitting in this room, Dr. James Smith, who sits on the board at the senior center, said, yes, I want to be involved with that. Jerry Goff said, I want to be involved with that. Bob Bick said, I want to be involved with that. And long story short, about a couple hours ago, I picked up the last check, and those checks totaled $10,000. I say to these men, thank you. And so this money's there, the problem's solved, the decisions don't have to be made. And I think more appropriately, not by government, but by people who care about this community and want to make it a better place. And so to those people, I say, thank you so much, and to the senior citizens to continue. And by the way, I am one. In fact, I think everybody up here maybe would, except for our youthful mayor.
Not yet, but not far off.
Yeah, but he's getting there. And so we are, we are there, but we just, we appreciate the fact that they've spent their life here, raised their families here, continue to make contributions. People are coming in every day, activity's up, and so I've got the checks, as a matter of fact, vaccine, or Dr. Smith, or Mike, I saw Monica back there, all these folks, maybe I'm missing somebody on the board. Be sure to get these before you leave because I want to get them out of my hands and yours. And so that problem is solved, and as a result of that, Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask that item 7D be removed from the agenda.
Thank you very much, and it is done. 7E, consider resolution R170914, authorizing the electric department to adjust its retail rates to ensure the pass-through of the wholesale rate change amendment approved by TVA. Tony Peak.
Mayor and council, at its August board meeting, the TVA board voted to raise the wholesale electric rates by one and a half percent. And basically, we calculated that, and it looked like the increase will raise the average residential power bill. And when I say the average residential power bill, it's those using about 1,000 kilowatt-hours by $1.50. TVA continues to try to lower their debt, and combined with the drop in fuel costs over the last few years, their effective rate is actually 2% less than it was in 2013. So we looked at the possibility of absorbing this increase, but what's left of the fiscal period, it would be in excess of $500,000. It is a recurring thing, so the additional years would be in excess of $700,000. With the expenses that we know we're going to have, we could see no way to absorb that, and we'd ask that you allow us to adjust to pass that rate through.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Just to clarify, this is 100% pass-through. Our department is getting charged, this TVA is raising it to our department. We're passing that through. There's not one penny extra coming into our department. This simply covers the cost of the power.
That is correct.
Very good. All vote?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
7F, consider authorizing Waller, Lansden, Dorch, and Davis LLP as bond counsel for the proposed issuance of up to $2.8 million in general obligation bond, Series 2017. Brenda Emel.
Mayor and council, this agenda item, as well as the next three items, all relate to a proposed bond issue, not to exceed $2.8 million. This first item approves the bond counsel. Waller, Lansden, Dorch, and Davis have served as counsel on the last four bonds that we did and have done a great job. The services they will provide include issuing a bond opinion, preparing and or reviewing all the required bond documents. Their fee for the service will be $12,000, which will be paid from the proceeds of the bond, and I'd like to request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7G, consider authorizing Cumberland Securities Company Incorporated as financial advisor and bond fiscal agent for the proposed issuance of up to $2.8 million in general obligation bond, Series 2017. Finance Director Emel.
Cumberland Securities Company, Inc. has been our financial advisor since 2015. With your approval this evening, we would like them to service the financial advisor on this bond issue. Some of the services that they will provide are listed there. They'll prepare and publish the official notices, advertise the sale of the bonds, coordinate and supervise the bid process. They'll evaluate the bids that come in and determine the most favorable bid for the city. The fees and all the bond issue costs related to this debt issue are listed there. The financial advisor fee would be $14,000. $1,000 preparing, publishing the official notice of sale. $4,500 preparation and distributing the official statements. $3,800 miscellaneous expenses, travel, paying agent fees, et cetera, and $700 the trustee counsel fees. And then also, when we issue bonds, we have Moody's Rating Agency Radar Bonds, and their fee for that will be $11,500. And again, all those bond, all these costs will be paid from the proceeds of the bond issue, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
7H, consider resolution R170915, initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $2.8 million in general obligation bonds of Cookeville, Tennessee. Brenda Emel.
Yes, Mayor and council, if you recall at the budget work session, we had put in the budget this year to debt issues. We were going to do a capital outlay note to purchase some capital for various departments and a $2.2 million debt issue. But after analyzing it and discussing it with our financial advisor, we decided to wrap those two issues into one debt issue. It would provide more favorable rates for the city and give us greater flexibility in what we're trying to do. So this is a proposed bond issue of not to exceed $2.8 million. The primary projects in this debt issue would be the completion of Tennessee Avenue and then get started on the long project we've been talking about, Police Headquarters. So some of this money could be used to get started on that, acquisition of property, design and architectural surveys. And then also, the equipment piece of this debt issue would be about $550,000, and that would be used to purchase a fire truck, a couple pickup trucks, and a utility vehicle for the rail trail, if you recall, we talked about during the budget work session. The bond issue costs, which we had talked about in the last two agenda items, would be $47,500. And those are the primary projects, but keep in mind, if you read the resolution itself, it's written kind of generically, and it gives us some flexibility so, you know, we can kind of flip between some projects there, so. And we had applied for a grant for the fire truck, and we're still waiting to hear about that. So if we get that grant, we've got some flexibility, we can use that money for some other things. Let's see. So to give you an idea and some information on where our debt currently is and the condition of our debt service fund and give you some idea on our debt capacity, this slide shows you our current general government debt outstanding. Now, this is just a general government, doesn't include the utilities, and the general government is serviced out of our debt service fund. As of the beginning of this fiscal year, July 1st, we have $20,138,666 in debt outstanding, and that is made up of bonds, $17 million and $10,000, and some notes through the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund and a capital outlay note of $4,128,000. Now, this graph shows you the debt service on that debt that's outstanding, and you can see there that if we issued no more debt, that all that debt would be paid off in 2031. And you can see even at the highest point in fiscal year 2018, the debt service on our debt is less than $3 million. And what you don't see on that slide is the revenues that are going into that fund that we budgeted for 2018 are just over $3.5 million. So you can see we've got some spread there between what's going in and what debt service payments we have to make. Now, with this debt issue we're proposing tonight of $2.8 million, that's the green blocks, that shows you what the debt service would look like if we borrowed, if you approve borrowing that money and we do that debt issue. And you can see it puts the debt service payments for the next couple years just over $3 million, but again, we have $3.5 million in revenue going into there. So that gives you an idea of our current debt outstanding and our current debt service and with this new proposed issue that we have. So to give you an idea of what debt capacity we would still have if we did this debt issue, some kind of what-if scenarios. So what if then, early in next fiscal year, we borrowed another $14 million to do the construction of the police station? So you can see what the debt service would be like on that. The purple blocks will be the debt service on that debt issue. And you can see for about five years, and the red line then is the revenue that's going into the debt service fund. So for about five years, that, those columns exceed the revenue that's going into there. So for about five years, we'd be taking money out of the fund balance to meet the debt service. But we have an $11 million, we started this fiscal year with over $11 million in fund balance in the debt service fund, and that's the highest it's ever been. And if you recall, I said we had $20 million in debt outstanding, so we have 52% of the debt outstanding in fund balance. So we have a healthy fund balance. So taking that, some of that money out for the next five years out of fund balance, you say, well, what does that do to our fund balance? So there's what it does to our fund balance. You can see, like I said, we have over $11 million now, so for the five years, that fund balance amount would go down. And at its lowest point in about 2024, it still would be at $8,199. So, and what they recommend is to have a fund balance that's equal to about one year's debt service. And the one year's debt service with this debt issue, that is in that 2024, would only still be $4.5 million. So we'd still have plenty of fund balance to cover one year's debt service. Okay? Then to give you one more what-if scenario, what if behind that, the next fiscal year, we wanted to borrow another $5 million, whether it's needed to complete the police station or do an aquatics park? This gives you an idea of what the debt service would be on that. And that pushes those, that five years out to about three years, that we would, you know, use some of fund balance to help meet the debt service. And you say, well, what does that do to your fund balance? And then this slide shows you, we reduced fund balance in its lowest point in about 2026. It would still get, it would only get down to about $5,118,000, and debt service that year would be about $3.8 million. So we're planning some big debt issues in the short horizon here, but we have a nice fund balance. And the reason we have that $11 million fund balance is because we had a lot of variable rate debt on our books over the last 10 to 15 years, and the interest rate on variable rate debts, we budgeted at 5%, but for a number of years, it was well below 1%. So we were able to build that fund balance up. So now, to do these larger debt issues that we're planning, we can use some of that fund balance then to help us meet those debt service payments. So hopefully, that gives you an idea of what our debt service looks like and what our capacity we have for future debt issues. Again, these are examples with no new revenue being dedicated to the debt service fund. And back to the resolution before you, this evening, the resolution authorizes a proposed bond issue not to exceed $2.8 million, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Just curious, Brenda, you mentioned fire trucks. What size grant have we applied for the fire trucks, and when do we expect to know about the outcome of that?
Well, we should have known, usually we know about July, but it's been delayed for some reason this year, and it's about, what, $400,000? Where's Darrow at?
I believe it was four and a half.
Four and a half, $450,000. Yeah, so it'll pretty much pay for the fire truck. It's like about 90% of it, so.
Thank you.
Also, Brenda, when you were talking about the fund balance and the charts you just showed us, that's all based on the tax rate staying at the same level we currently have.
Right. The tax rate, and we're putting four cents of the property tax rate into this debt service fund. So, and that's keeping that the same. And also going into here is the state sales tax. So I showed just a little bit of growth in that, and then the hospitals in lieu of tax payment also goes into this fund. So, yeah, so like I'm saying, these examples are with, you know, the same, no new dedicated revenue. So, you know, we have some flexibility. If we wanted to do more, we just have to put more revenue in there.
Couple important points. We have the about 10th lowest property tax rate in the state of Tennessee, and this council hasn't raised property taxes. We fund our government through sales tax and property tax. Our sales tax growth, that's why sales taxes, retail shopping is so important in our community because it helps keep our property taxes low and helps fund our school. You know, the new shops at Eagles Point has broken ground now. The estimate on that was over $2 million in sales tax revenue additional coming in. So the point of all that is, is as we continue to grow, there's going to be more needs, there's going to be more infrastructure needs, there's going to be more road needs, all these things. But as you can see, even able to fund these projects out of our growth, and we're blessed with growth, and we'll continue to do our best to keep our property taxes as low as possible and let our retail shopping help continue to fund our city's growth and infrastructure needs. So we're very thankful for that. Any other comments?
All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7I, consider resolution R170916, authorizing the execution terms, issuance, sale, and payment of not to exceed $2.8 million in general obligation bonds, Series 2017 of the city of Cookeville, Tennessee, and providing the details thereof. Finance Director Emel.
Mayor and council, this is the last issue, the last agenda item related to these bonds. This is the detailed resolution, which is like 20 pages long, and provides all the provisions and the various details of the bonds. It has definitions, sets forth all the maturity and redemption dates, and all the legal provisions that we need to have in the bonds. So unless you have any other questions, I'm going to recommend your approval.
Could you read those to us?
That's his?
Just kidding. Is there a motion? Motion is second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7J, consider approval to purchase two pre-owned Dodge Charger police pursuit vehicles for the Cookeville Police Department. Chief Evans.
Mayor and council, these are, let's find the slide here. These are 2015 Dodge Chargers. They're surplus vehicles from the Missouri Highway Patrol, and they are police pursuit vehicles. They come with the complete, the remainder of the factory warranty, and also, the good thing about these vehicles, we actually get the full maintenance history on these vehicles, so we kind of know what we're getting. The current price of each vehicle is $17,500. Total purchase is $35,000, I got $35,000 rather. It is a purchase from the drug fund. We're currently budgeted $19,000 in there for this purchase, so it will require a $16,000 amendment to the drug fund budget, and I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion?
Chief?
Yes.
You've got two patrol cars here, and you know, some of the vehicles you've mentioned before, that you're putting some SUVs in the fleet because they give officers more room, plus officers need more equipment.
Yes, sir.
Does the Missouri State Highway Patrol, when they put that, do they ever have any of the SUVs available?
Yes, I think some of those are becoming available, but they are quite a bit more expensive. These two vehicles are going to be used for administrative and investigative work, so the, you know, ability to, you know, the requirement to crawl in and out of those with all that equipment on is really not as tough on those officers, so... And this is a more physically responsible way of meeting our needs and...
Very good. Any other questions? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7K, consider awarding bid for surveying total station for the Public Works Department, Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, we recently advertised and received bids for a new total station for our surveying department. Received one bid, the price for the new total station was $19,000, less a trade-in value of our existing equipment for $4,500. Total bid will be $14,500. I'd request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
7L, consider awarding bid for 2017 smoke testing project rebid, Water Quality Control Department, Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we're going to be doing some smoke testing over in a couple areas of town, Melrose subdivision, up here in the middle part of town, and then over around the McCord area, and we've opened those bids. PCI Contracting Incorporated was the low bidder, $32,134.32, and we would recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. 7M, consider awarding bid for 2018 CIPP project for Water Quality Control Department, Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, this is a, where we sort of rebuild our infrastructure and put money into rebuilding every year. This is our, one of our annual projects, and this one's going to be sort of, we've been staying in certain basins, this one's going to hopscotch around different parts of town, trying to identify certain areas that need rebuilding. Lane Inliner was the low bidder on this job, meeting the specifications, $815,445.74, and we'd recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Very good. That concludes our agenda portion. At this time, we will open to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Anyone that would like to address the council on non-agenda items, they may come to the podium, and do we have anyone that would like to address the council? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
It wasn't an agenda item, you were through it, right? So...
Well, technically, it was, but you can go ahead.
I just want to thank the city council, you've been so good to us on behalf of our board and the people who attend that center. We really appreciate all you've done. You give us a wonderful building, you've given us a new roof, new ceiling tile, new dividers in the dining room, and just, every time we have a need, something goes wrong, we call Rick Woods, and it's taken care of. And we want you to know that we really appreciate you, and we're glad to live in Cookeville. And thank you, Dwight. It's unbelievable what you've done for us, and I want to meet all those people and shake their hands. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Frey, we appreciate it. Anyone else?
Mayor, Councilman, I'm here tonight in my role as chairperson of the Putnam County Library Board of Trustees, and Mayor Sheldon, not that long ago, invited me to bring our new director to say hello and for you guys to get to know a little bit. We, as you know, earlier this year, we learned that we were going to lose our director. She moved on to other promising projects, and the director of our adult services program graciously stepped up and agreed to be interim for us. So, I want to introduce you to the newest member of our director, our administrative community, and this is Phil Schaller. Phil is, has been with us for a couple of years now, and he's just delightful. I think you'll get to, I think you'll enjoy getting to know him. Do you want to...
Want to say something, sir? That's a very warm reception, thank you. So, as she said, my name is Phil Schaller, I'm the new interim director for the Putnam County Library. I'll be interim for about three months until we all collectively decide that it is a good fit or not a good fit. Hopefully, it'll be a good fit. So, I just wanted to introduce myself, put myself out there. I'm relatively new to the city of Cookeville, I've been here about five years, but I've absolutely fallen in love with this community, and so I'm here to serve this community as best I can. And so, I'm at the disposal of the city council and at the disposal of the community, so if you guys ever need anything, you know where to find me, I'm right across the street.
Thank you, sir. Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. You'll step to the podium and identify yourself with your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name's Alan Maynard, I live at 60 North Elm Avenue, I guess I'm an IRA citizen. I have an issue with, right across from me at Freeze and Freeze Ferguson and, now, I can't remember, but they're making a subdivision in there. I knew this process was happening, I saw them stakeout, but there never was a variance sign put up, or where I knew about a hearing never was notified. I don't know, some kind of thing was snuck in where it passed somehow, where, you know, and the infrastructure over there is really bad. Two houses were built in front of me about 10 years or so ago, the water runoff, those never should have been built, and I showed up for meetings for those, and those actually, like I said, if you look at it, they never should have been built. So, I have, you know, with the property over there, a lot of it was built in 1924. My place has been in my family since '41, and as far as I know, through my mother telling me, and there has been no upgrades to the infrastructure sewer-wise or anything since '41, since they moved in. I've had issues that I've got a little bit taken care of, but for them to just slide in and going to add about nine houses across the way is an issue that I take concern with. I mean, already I get runoff, considerable runoff, they're going to add more houses, it's going to add more runoff. The Denton, the street I'm talking about, it's, when they did the fill-in of the property down on the triangle, right down Elm and Broad, where they all come together, it actually caused backup on Denton, and that road's washed away, and it's getting ready to wash away again. There's a lot of concerns, and just to throw in some houses without doing any infrastructure, I mean, I have some serious, serious issues with it. And one of the properties, from what I gather, I may be wrong, but because they didn't tear down or build anything, they were allowed to put in this, you know, this zoning for a new subdivision. However, one of the lots, if you go look, is right through one of the houses, and they're planning on tearing this house down after they sell the properties. So, I mean, that's, to me, that's kind of dirty. I mean, it might be perfectly legal, but, you know, something's wrong. It needs to be looked into. I don't want to stand for it. I mean, I want the stuff fixed up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor? Oh, did you have something? Yes, ma'am. Just step to the podium and tell your name and address, please.
Okay. I have some distribution for the people on the council, please. Good afternoon, council, my name is Rhonda Brown, I reside at 223 St. James West. I have had an ongoing issue with noise coming from the business located at 565 South Jefferson since 2013. I would like to address Municipal Code Title 11, Chapter 2, specifically when we look at 3A dealing with decibel or decibel levels, and what is considered a violation? I have been working with the Cookeville Police Department since 2013, when I first spoke with Chief Terry at the time. I've spoken to Major Evans, who is now the chief. I've spoken to...
He's our chief.
I have spoken to Sergeant Milton and Captain Lee. There are various causes for the noise, but I've been given different reasons. I think the bottom line for clarification now is that the base of the audio equipment resonates throughout the community with a boom, boom, boom. That's the only way I can describe it, okay? So, I would like to have this municipal code to be considered for revision, review, someone's sponsor something that can adjust these decibel levels, so it's not so annoying. It's not just myself, I've spoken to the people who reside at 531 South Walnut, 585 Fauch Street. This is an issue, and it needs to be addressed. This is my first time speaking with you, I don't know if I'm on the right track or what next steps need to be taken, but if you can advise me, I'll be more than happy to take action, whatever is needed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel?
I was calm, I thought I'd stay calm.
Sir, the comment was over, Peter, it's council's turn now. Thank you.
I've talked to Ms. Brown on the phone, and that is on our radar screen. We've had one case in city court about that particular business already, and I think with our conversations, it's not something that's going unnoticed, and I appreciate you being here tonight to make us aware of that, both you folks. We've had, Ms. Brown and I've had two or three conversations on the telephone. What I want to mention was, on behalf of Beth Thompson and the folks at the Cookeville History Museum, Saturday night, an event called Night at the Museum, and about 7:00, 20 characters or personalities, or whatever you want to call them, will escape from the museum and line up on Broad Street, and representing personalities and professions and whatnot of Cookeville and Putnam County's past. And groups, small groups will be able to walk and get in front of those characters and spend about five minutes in front of them, learning something I believe you don't know about our area, and really having a lot of fun. And the event is free and sponsored by, of course, Depot Museum and Leisure Services. There'll be sergeant riding preachers and teachers, and Beth has asked me to portray a character from our noble moonshining community, or community, and so I'm going to be offering hoots to everyone who'll come up to me. But that does, I hope you come out and enjoy that Saturday night, starting at 7:00, and enjoy Night at the Museum.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank the people from the seniors center coming, all 900 of them are represented ably here by these people, I see several people that I know, and as one of the members of the 900-person Cookeville Senior Center, I love exercising, and the only problem we have is we're getting too big in our exercise group to fit in the room, but it's a nice problem to have, and I appreciate y'all all showing up.
Mr. Mayor, two weeks ago, the city, Cityscape had Fall Fun Fest, and it was a tremendous success. We actually had two days of great weather, and the response was great. It's a great event that we have in our city, free. Vendors that were selling were ecstatic with the results that they got in a short period of time. It has traditionally been in September, next year, you're probably going to see it in October, so it'll be a little cooler, and hopefully, the weather continues to cooperate. I would like to thank everybody that attended, and especially to the city employees that helped pull this off, very much appreciated, and I think the community likes this event, and we're going to continue it and try to make it better. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you to our attendees tonight, we appreciate you being here. We are adjourned.